Session of the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education Regular Meeting, March 22, 2011. First, we have a presentation. If we can have Mrs. Williams, do I see her around? Oh, thanks, Katie. Introduce our presenters this evening.
We are here tonight to talk with you about Number Corners. And if you remember, we've talked about Bridges. Bridges being a pilot that we're doing now in 4th and 5th. And along with it is a portion called Number Corners. And we now have it implemented in kindergarten through 5th. And so, we thought it would be a really interesting experience for you to see what the kids are doing with Number Corners. So, Mrs. Krieger has worked with three of our children. We have a short presentation and then some questions from you, if you have any. Mrs. Krieger, ready to go.
Thank you very much. Number Corner is a set of lessons and routines developed by the Math Learning Center with partial funding from National Science Foundation. It's comprised of daily workouts centered around calendar and complements many math programs, including everyday math. The Number Corner daily routines can be grouped into four basic components. Sorry, I don't have a little clicker thing on. Not that high-tech. The most visible aspect of the program is the calendar collector, or the calendar grid, excuse me. It's the focus of whole-class discussions. Other components provide ongoing instruction in various variety of skills such as measurement, including time, temperature, and capacity, geometry, reading charts and graphs, probability, problem-solving, and much, much more. I'd like you to take three major ideas away from this short presentation tonight. Number Corner is number one, about the students; number two, about the students; and number three, about the students. Since it's all about the students, rather than me standing up here and talking at you, students are going to take center stage. The first up is going to be a video clip of several 2nd grade Number Corner discussions.
Okay. Um, first, we have half of the number attitudes. At one state, we had discussion yesterday whether it was 1/3 of the balloons were red or 2/3 of the balloons were blue. What were the predictions you made in your journal this morning about what today's piece on the calendar is going to be hyper? The other half's the hamburger. What was your prediction, Daphne?
My prediction was something of 1/3.
Something that was another, something that was a third. Do you think the pattern?
Um, 1/2, 1/3, 1/4.
So, you think it's going to be a repeating pattern? 1/2 or 3/4?
Or like, well, like 1/5, 1/5, 1/5.
Oh, or a growing pattern.
Over the weekend, we were able to add three parts. What did you notice?
Um, I, I noticed that it's a growing pattern because, like I said, it's 1/2, 2/3, and right now it's a 3/8. So, I know, I know, I think tomorrow it's going to be a 4/4, and then it continues growing.
What is growing every week?
Is that the numerator there?
I can't hear, but she's got the mic on.
Uh, just pull out the middle square and you make it on your way.
First, first, you need to find the area. You have to know how many squares the, the shape is. So, we know the, since the, um, shape is 21 squares, and each square is 1 square inch. So, so if you want to find it, what is, what do you, what do you want? Area is 21 squares. To find the perimeter, you have, you have to see how many inches on around the outside. So, first, just how many inches on this side does, maybe it's just on this side. And, uh, seven inches on this side, and we know this side is 3, this side has to be 3, and this side is 7, this side has to be 7. And now, when we add it up, 7 plus 7 is 14, and 3 plus 3 is 6, and 14 plus 6 equals 20. So, we know the perimeter is 20 inches, and we don't need the square, and just stop, because we're not using square inches.
Now, that was just a small snippet of the discussion that went in on in these 2nd grade classrooms. What you didn't see is the discussion about prime and composite numbers, fractional parts of that tile array you saw, and generating equations for the total days in school. Now, I'd like to introduce to you Mary Javier, a student in Mrs. Lincolnsey's class, is going to take you back to 4th grade with a calendar collector lesson.
Come on up, Mary. Do you have to draw something else? Okay. And I'm just her age, so I can. Can you get some? Um, side here.
How many cups of water do you drink in one day?
Responses?
Eight.
Three.
Five.
Ten.
Here's one cup. We learned how to accurately measure using the right tool. Now that you see what a cup is, would you change your estimate of how much water you drink?
Hmm.
A little more.
How many days you think it'll take to fill this container when you fill it with one cup every day?
Four.
Yeah, four.
About eight.
Every day, we marked the cup and then filled out a chart.
I filled out the chart. Oh. There we go.
Would you now change your estimate of how many cups in the container?
In this container. Can you change your estimate?
The container is four cups, or one quart. Later on, we labeled fractions for the cups, such as 1/4, 2/4, 3/4, or 4/4. After we had four whole quarts, we poured them into the gallon. We entered all our data on the chart. And wrote fractions for them. Once we had one gallon, we knew that there were 16 cups in one quart, one gallon. So, then we knew how to do our fractions. I learned that there were 16 cups in one gallon. Also, a little about equivalent fractions, including mixed numbers, such as 2/4 equals 1/2 as an equivalent fraction, or 2 and 1/4 as a mixed number. Doing this, I got a better picture of, in my mind, or visualizing, using standard capacity in cups, quarts, and gallons.
Thank you.
It took me 40 years to learn that, by the way.
Next, I'd like to introduce you to some 5th grade students. Since you've already been in 4th grade, we've decided to move you up a next level. So, now you're in 5th grade with Will Boyd-Dott and Max Dean-Georgie. And Will has chosen his favorite calendar grid from this school year to walk you through with one of these presentations. And in the spirit of Number Corner, this will be an interactive lesson. So, please, please add your responses when he requests them.
Okay. For each day in Number Corner, we will, we would turn over a card, and we would make mathematical observations about it, like what shape it is, and what's the area, and if it has parallel sides or not. So, can you guys name what shape this is?
Rectangle.
Okay. And what would be the area of this shape? If 1 square is 1 unit?
1/2 square inch, 1/2 square unit.
Okay. And what mathematical observations can you make about it?
You're on a roll, Mary Jane, let's go.
It has two sets of parallel lines and 4 90-degree angles.
Okay.
And it's red.
Max, do you have any other observations?
You might pass 5th grade.
It's a quadrat, and, quadrilateral. It's a rectangle, another name for it is a rectangle. And it has four sides, and two sides are equivalent, and the other two sides, I mean, parallel sides are equivalent.
Okay. Okay. And what would be the area of this same rectangle, or bigger?
2 units.
Okay. And what would be the scale factor from day 1 to day 2? And a scale factor is the size difference between two similar shapes. So, if there was one rectangle that was a 1/2 square unit, and then another rectangle that was a 1 full square unit, that would be a 200% scale factor, 2 times. So, if it goes from 1/2 square unit to 2 units, what would be the scale factor for that?
400%.
400.
Okay. And can anybody make any mathematical observations for this?
It's similar to day 1. It has 4 right angles and parallel. Okay, um, it's red. Parallel sides are, are equivalent. Uh, 2 square unit, uh, square units, the area's 2 square units. Um, the size differential from the, from the length of the sides is times 200, and the area's times 400.
And can anybody make a prediction for what day 3 might be?
Hmm. Double it again.
The whole bottom row, 4.
Oh, tricky.
Wrong.
And what shape is this?
Triangle.
Right triangle.
Be more specific about it?
It's a right triangle, right?
Isosceles triangle.
And what, what is, what makes it isosceles?
90-degree angle.
It's 2 sides that are equal length.
Okay. And what's the area?
1/2.
1/2 square unit.
Okay. And what is the area? I'm sorry, what, what mathematical observations can you make about this?
It's the same area as day 1.
Okay.
Good. Anything else? Smarty pants?
No.
Oh, wow.
And what would be the area of this similar triangle?
2 square units.
2. And what is the scale factor from day 3 to day 4?
400%.
And can you make any other observations about it?
It's green. 2 45-degree angles, right, and 1 90.
The, the height and the length are double what the first day is.
Okay. And can anybody predict what day 5 and, or 6 might be?
Circle. Circles. Which, which would be bad.
I think it's, it's going to be a blue circle.
Blue circles, light projection.
Oh.
Parallelogram.
Parallelogram.
So, for this Number Corner, we would continue that routine.
It's cool.
Throughout the whole thing. And once we got farther in, we could make more in-depth predictions.
Cool.
Because it got more clear. And once we got to day 14, we made a prediction, I mean, not a prediction, we found a pattern. So, can any of you find a pattern from day 1 to 14? One of the patterns that we found, or that she thought we found, that it went quadrangle, tri- triangle, quadrangle, triangle, quadrangle, pentagon, quadrangle. And we thought the next 15, 16, we thought it'd be another pentagon, but actually, it was another triangle. And once this happened, we had to try to, we had to make a new, we had to find, try to find a new pattern. And that's what I like about Number Corner.
3-sided, 4-sided, 4-sided, 3-sided.
Cool.
And then, these two, these two days were, the, the shape was kind of weird. So, like, okay, what was, what would be the most specific name for the shape?
An irregular polygon?
Okay.
Ambus?
No.
Irregular quadrangles.
Okay. And what would be the area for day 17 or 18?
Uh-oh, 17?
2 and 1/2. What is it?
2 and 1/2.
It is 10 square units.
For 18?
Yes.
And how, and how'd you figure that out?
Figured it out because first found all the full squares in the, in the shape thing, the quadrangle. And then, I did, I found the 2 halves here, and put them together to make another one. So, that's 8, 8 square units. Then, I put, I matched this and that together to get, to get 9 square units, and these 2 fit together to 10 square.
Okay. And one other way that we fi, we usually find it for a shape like this, we would divide it into 2 shapes, so a triangle and a quadrangle. And we would find the area for the triangles, we do 2 times 4 divided in half equals 4. And then, this, this is just 5, and then this is 6. So, you just do 6 plus 4 equals 10. And then, you do, and then you can do the same to that. And that, that one would be 2 and 1/2. So, what would be the scale factor from day 17 to 18? If it's 2 and 1/2 to 10?
400%.
400%.
And can you make any other observations about these 2 shapes?
Max is ready too.
Yes, Max, tell us.
Colors are obscene.
Okay. And what I liked about this Number Corner is how they made you be really specific about what you call their shape, and it helped you use, helped me use my math vocabulary instead of saying, just like, that's a triangle, instead of, instead of saying, that's a right scaling triangle, or isosceles triangle. And what I also liked is, for this, there was, for this Number Corner, there was 31 days, and every 2 days, there would be a pair. But for day 31, it had to be by itself, so it was hard to infer what the last day might be. And a lot of people said it would be day 1, but it was just, just a triangle, just that same triangle, but rotated.
Excellent.
That's great.
Boy, how do you top those 2, huh? Well, this presentation would not be complete without having a little bit of the teacher input to go along with it.
I think Number Corner is a nice forum that gives children a chance to really talk about math, to have those great whole-class conversations. It is, also gives them opportunities to kind of challenge themselves with some open-ended discussions that we have during Number Corner. So, I think that's really beneficial for everyone to be a part of those conversations.
Number Corners give the children many different opportunities. It's a very good visual for the visual learner. They're able to make connections and ask thicker questions about it. The one we're doing this month, in March, is fractions. It's, the children are learning equal fractions, fractions of a whole. And our math collector is evaporation. So, along with that, we will be doing a frequency chart to show the level of evaporation each day. And so, there's many hands-on and visual parts of this that I like.
I absolutely love Number Corner. I think it's added a great component to my math class. The mathematical language that comes out of our conversations every day is extremely important. And it's also the repetition that, that occurs during the month on certain math concepts definitely increases my students' knowledge, depending on where they're at in, in math. And I just, I think it's a really, a great added component compared to other programs that I've taught in the past.
I apologize, I've gone in more than 10 minutes, even though I cut a lot about, out of this. And it's really hard to give a full representation of this powerful curricular piece in such a short time span that we had. Hopefully, we've given you enough that you realize the truth between, behind the introductory comments, that Number Corner is all about the students.
Thank you. Thank you.
A special thank you to the students. You can see the richness of the language, it's incredible. And again, we have Number Corners in kindergarten through 5th grade, and the metacognition, the changing, or the thinking out loud and exchanging ideas is incredible. A special thank you to the students that were involved and the families that brought their students.
Great job, guys.
And to Mrs. Krieger for organizing.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Krieger.
Okay, on to our next item, communications and questions from visitors. If I can just read a brief statement about public participation at Board of Education meetings. At each regular and special open meeting, members of the public and district employees may comment to or ask questions of the board. We ask that you abide by these following rules. Identify yourself, and please limit your comments to 5 minutes. If I could ask one of the board members to be the timekeeper? Eric, thank you. So, again, just identify yourself and limit your comments to 5 minutes. If you ha, if you're going to address the board, we ask that you fill out one of these forms located behind Kathleen, if you haven't done so already. Okay, with that, I will open it up to questions and communications from visitors.
I filled out a form. Thank you. I just have a letter.
Can you state your name?
Jennifer Haran.
And also your address, please.
751 Lincoln Avenue, Lake Bluff.
Thank you, Jen.
I have a letter that I wrote, if I can read that.
Yep.
Entering Lake Bluff 11 years ago and the school system 6 years ago gave me a feeling of excitement. Excitement because you knew you were enrolling your children in a fabulous school where teachers loved their jobs. Collaboration was a large part of the relationship between the school staff, school board, and the administration. And you could trust the decisions that were being made because you felt like they were being done in the best interest of the school and the children being educated there. That is no longer the case for me. Let me first start by saying that I spent a great deal of time in the elementary building as PTO president, volunteering in the library, and helping in my kids' classrooms. I used to be a teacher in Glenview, so I enjoy the chance to be in the building, helping the staff and all the children. I believe the teachers are doing the absolute best job they can under the circumstances they have been given over the past 18 months. There is not a doubt in my mind that when I send my boys off to LBES, that their teachers are not giving 100% to their jobs. Over the course of the past 18 months, collaboration is no longer a word that I can associate with our school district. Class sizes have gotten larger despite assurances at past school board meetings that K-2 classes would not rise above 20 students. I personally questioned the board last August regarding the kindergarten class sizes and the concerns regarding late enrollment. I was not told the truth. As PTO president with many duties that involve working in the school prior to school starting, I know for a fact that the administration was well aware of the number of kindergarteners that they were dealing with during the time leading up to the start of school. There was ample time to hire an additional teacher to make those classroom sizes more appropriate. I was told it was out of the ordinary to have this many children register for kindergarten so close to the start of school. Again, this is not factual. If you look at the history of enrollment over the past years, it is evident that it is not out of the ordinary at all. Currently, we have a kindergarten class with as many as 24 children. Once school started, kindergarten teachers were told by the administration that they were evaluating the situation and would be making changes if necessary by Labor Day. In hindsight, I see that this was simply a stalling tactic. After this waiting time passed, people were told that because so much time had now passed since the beginning of school year, it was just too disruptive to make changes at that point. Aides were placed in each of the kindergarten classrooms to help manage the large class sizes. Administration says they were observing the classrooms. Unless you were in that classroom all day long, a stopover for 5 minutes will not give you an idea of what it's like in that classroom on a daily basis. We will encounter the same problems with 1st grade next year. Again, history has shown we get a substantial number of new 1st graders registering in the district, students that have attended St. Mary's, Montessori, Dear Haven, and other schools for their kindergarten year. These already overflowed kindergarten classes will now be added to with the addition of these new students next year. This is simply unacceptable. I realize that at the end of the day, a budget has to be balanced and proposed for review. I understand that sometimes cuts need to be made. As a community, staff, school board, and administration, our top priority should be the students. When budget cuts start affecting the education of our students, that is when the line needs to be drawn. When all an administration is concerned about is the bottom line financially, a step back needs to be taken, priorities need to be reevaluated. There needs to be a balance between what the district needs and how it can be met financially. I believe a good look needs to be taken at the jobs and salaries being offered in the district office before we jump to make any more cuts at the building level. At the February school board meeting, the assistant principal position at LBES was eliminated as of June 2011. This action was taken despite the fact that the staff itself indicates, based on day-to-day interactions with their current administrators, that a building of their size and an age range of the children makes the need for two administrators a necessity. The search for a new principal for 2011 has had a rocky start. There were less than 4 weeks by the ti, between the time that Katie Williams turned in her resignation and we had started the interview process at LBES. How is that even possible to allow ample time to generate a significant amount of qualified applicants? The process has been rushed. In my opinion, hiring from within could be a more successful route for the elementary school at that time. The amount of change our staff has gone through in the past 10 years has been difficult. Some teachers have had as many as 7 or 8 different principals during this time. The principal position is a 1-year contract. Why not at least give someone with the qualifications already in the building who is familiar with the community and the workings of our school, the opportunity to interview with the staff, community members, and board members? Opportunities to this effect were not given, and were not given for inappropriate reasons, regardless of what the requirements to be principal ended up being halfway through the process. I can't help but wonder if the process would have been handled more professionally if we ni, if we might not be at this board meeting proposing to the board our new principal for 2011. I feel cliche when I ask the administration and the board to provide us with some transparency. It is clear that when challenged, this has changed in some situations, but it shouldn't have to be challenged in order for this to happen. It should be something that is
Boy, how do you top those two, huh? Well, this presentation would not be complete without having a little bit of the teacher input to go along with it.
I think Number Corner is a nice forum that gives children a chance to really talk about math, to have those great whole-class conversations. It also gives them opportunities to kind of challenge themselves with some open-ended discussions that we have during Number Corner. So I think that's really beneficial for everyone to be a part of those conversations.
Number Corners give the children many different opportunities. It's a very good visual for the visual learner. They're able to make connections and ask thicker questions about it. The one we're doing this month in March is fractions. It's the children are learning equal fractions, fractions of a whole. And our math collector is evaporation. So along with that, we will be doing a frequency chart to show the level of evaporation each day. And so there's many hands-on and visual parts of this that I like.
I absolutely love Number Corner. I think it's added a great component to my math class. The mathematical language that comes out of our conversations every day is extremely important. And it's also the repetition that occurs during the month on certain math concepts definitely increases my students' knowledge, depending on where they're at in math. And I just, I think it's a really, a great added component compared to other programs that I've taught in the past.
I apologize, I've gone in more than 10 minutes even though I cut a lot of out of this. And it's really hard to give a full representation of this powerful curricular piece in such a short time span that we had. Hopefully, we've given you enough that you realize the truth between, behind the introductory comments, that Number Corner is all about the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A special thank you to the students. You can see the richness of the language. It's incredible. And again, we have Number Corners in kindergarten through fifth grade. And the metacognition, the changing or the thinking out loud and exchanging ideas is incredible. A special thank you to the students that were involved and the families that brought their students.
Great job, guys.
And to Mrs. Krieger for organizing.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Krieger.
Okay, on to our next item, communications and questions from visitors. If I can just read a brief statement about public participation at Board of Education meetings. At each regular and special open meeting, members of the public and district employees may comment to or ask questions of the board. We ask that you abide by these following rules. Identify yourself, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If I could ask one of the board members to be the timekeeper. Eric, thank you. So again, just identify yourself and limit your comments to five minutes. If you're going to address the board, we ask that you fill out one of these forms located behind Kathleen, if you haven't done so already. Okay, with that, I will open it up to questions and communications from visitors.
I filled out a form.
Thank you.
I just have a letter.
Can you state your name?
Jennifer Haran.
And also your address, please.
751 Lincoln Avenue, Lake Bluff.
Thank you, Jen.
I have a letter that I wrote, if I can read that. Entering Lake Bluff 11 years ago and the school system six years ago gave me a feeling of excitement. Excitement because you knew you were enrolling your children in a fabulous school where teachers loved their jobs. Collaboration was a large part of the relationship between the school staff, school board, and the administration. And you could trust the decisions that were being made because you felt like they were being done in the best interest of the school and the children being educated there. That is no longer the case for me. Let me first start by saying that I spent a great deal of time in the elementary building as PTO president, volunteering in the library and helping in my kids' classrooms. I used to be a teacher in Glenview, so I enjoy the chance to be in the building, helping the staff and all the children. I believe the teachers are doing the absolute best job they can under the circumstances they have been given over the past 18 months. There is not a doubt in my mind that when I send my boys off to LBES that their teachers are not giving 100% to their jobs. Over the course of the past 18 months, collaboration is no longer a word that I can associate with our school district. Class sizes have gotten larger despite assurances at past school board meetings that K-2 classes would not rise above 20 students. I personally questioned the board last August regarding the kindergarten class sizes and the concerns regarding late enrollment. I was not told the truth. As PTO president with many duties that involve working in the school prior to school starting, I know for a fact that the administration was well aware of the number of kindergarteners that they were dealing with during the time leading up to the start of school. There was ample time to hire an additional teacher to make those classroom sizes more appropriate. I was told it was out of the ordinary to have this many children register for kindergarten so close to the start of school. Again, this is not factual. If you look at the history of enrollment over the past years, it is evident that it is not out of the ordinary at all. Currently, we have a kindergarten class with as many as 24 children. Once school started, kindergarten teachers were told by the administration that they were evaluating the situation and would be making changes if necessary by Labor Day. In hindsight, I see that this was simply a stalling tactic. After this waiting time passed, people were told that because so much time had now passed since the beginning of school year, it was just too disruptive to make changes at that point. Aids were placed in each of the kindergarten classrooms to help manage the large class sizes. Administration says they were observing the classrooms. Unless you were in that classroom all day long, a stopover for five minutes will not give you an idea of what it's like in that classroom on a daily basis. We will encounter the same problems with first grade next year. Again, history has shown we get a substantial number of new first graders registering in the district. Students that have attended St. Mary's, Montessori, Dear Haven, and other schools for their kindergarten year. These already overflowed kindergarten classes will now be added to with the addition of these new students next year. This is simply unacceptable. I realize that at the end of the day, a budget has to be balanced and proposed for review. I understand that sometimes cuts need to be made. As a community, staff, school board, and administration, our top priority should be the students. When budget cuts start affecting the education of our students, that is when the line needs to be drawn. When all an administration is concerned about is the bottom line financially, a step back needs to be taken, priorities need to be reevaluated. There needs to be a balance between what the district needs and how it can be met financially. I believe a good look needs to be taken at the jobs and salaries being offered in the district office before we jump to make any more cuts at the building level. At the February school board meeting, the assistant principal position at LBES was eliminated as of June 2011. This action was taken despite the fact that the staff itself indicates, based on day-to-day interactions with their current administrators, that a building of their size and an age range of the children makes the need for two administrators a necessity. The search for a new principal for 2011 has had a rocky start. There were less than four weeks by the time, between the time that Katie Williams turned in her resignation and we had started the interview process at LBES. How is that even possible to allow ample time to generate a significant amount of qualified applicants? The process has been rushed. In my opinion, hiring from within could be a more successful route for the elementary school at that time. The amount of change our staff has gone through in the past 10 years has been difficult. Some teachers have had as many as seven or eight different principals during this time. The principal position is a one-year contract. Why not at least give someone with the qualifications already in the building who is familiar with the community and the workings of our school, the opportunity to interview with the staff, community members, and board members? Opportunities to this effect were not given, and were not given for inappropriate reasons, regardless of what the requirements to be principal ended up being halfway through the process. I can't help but wonder if the process would have been handled more professionally if we might not be at this board meeting proposing to the board our new principal for 2011. I feel cliche when I ask the administration and the board to provide us with some transparency. It is clear that when challenged, this has changed in some situations, but it shouldn't have to be challenged in order for this to happen. It should be something that is expected. It is something that our district has had in the past with respect to the community, the staff, the school board, and the administration. I would also encourage the return of collaboration between the administration and the staff. Before decisions are passed down, look for input from the people these decisions will affect most. People are most productive and successful when they feel they're valued and respected. We were a well-oiled working group in the past with respect for one another and our positions. Right now, there is a great deal of distrust in the system, which does nothing to benefit the children for whom we are truly here to support.
June Walton, 1111 Fair Oaks in Deerfield. Board of Education members, Dr. Askin and administrators. On behalf of the teachers and the staff at Lake Bluff Elementary School, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in the second step of the principal interviews. We want to acknowledge the successful collaboration between community, staff, and board members. We truly appreciated the conversation and the efforts of each group and how the focus of the entire evening centered on what was best for our students and our school. Every teacher and every staff member left Tuesday feeling that the exchange of ideas was timely and important. We feel optimistic that this was a positive step toward finding the best possible means to work as a team for the interest of our children and the well-being of Lake Bluff Elementary School, especially now as we search for a new principal. Several teachers have heard from parents and board members that they were unaware of the pervasive unsettled feelings at Lake Bluff Elementary. We feel that this has been, there has been much miscommunication and instances where little or no discussion has occurred regarding significant matters. This led to a continuous search for accurate answers regarding many issues that impact us. We are unsure why we have been surrounded by miscommunication, but sense that it involves the school board, the superintendent, the board office administration. We question if the appropriate checks and balances are in place for these teams to work together to best support our students and our school. There's been speculation and wonderment if the situation would have been, would have reached this point if the teachers, staff, and board members had been more vocal with each other earlier in the year. We know that within a school district, there's always going to be change. We are asking that a decision-making process be created that includes transparency. So many decisions directly affect teaching. Consequently, teacher participation in this process is essential. We are optimistic that teachers, staff, parents, board members, Dr. Askin, and the board office team want to move forward to this end. Lake Bluff is a unique and supportive community with involved parents, board members, and a wonderful PTO. Tuesday night reaffirmed this to many of us. We believe that if we continue with that type of collaboration and that positive energy, Lake Bluff Elementary School will reach its full potential. Thank you for your time, your consideration in the matter, and we look forward to your timely response and input. Thank you.
Mrs. Roque, is that a copy of the letter? Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Board of Education. John, my name is Annie Atsa. I am at 540 East North Avenue in Lake Bluff. I have five children, three of which are in the school system, a kindergartner who's one of the children in the half-day kindergarten with 24 students, a second grader and a fourth grader. And I'm here tonight because I participated in the Lake Bluff Elementary School Principal Committee. I was brought in, some parents were brought in in the second tier. So the first tier, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a smaller committee that was Board of Education, the superintendent, and staff?
Administration and staff.
Administration, no, no parents were involved.
No board either.
No, no board members. Okay, so just administration, staff were involved. And they had, what, 70 applicants from the posting?
Yes.
And they whittled it down to three?
Six.
Six. And then staff was brought in and whittled down to three?
The interview, the initial interview committee went from six to three.
Six to three. Okay. And then I was involved in this principal interview committee. And that was made up of parents, teachers, school board, and the superintendent, approximately 36 members. Just to kind of bring you all up to speed for those of you who weren't involved, the 70 candidates were considered, then it was eventually whittled down to three candidates. And we were brought in to ask them questions in a transparent process, which originally didn't start out that way, but when push came to shove, it became transparent. And we were eventually involved in this process, we were allowed to interview the candidates. So the candidates were presented to us, and we sat down and interviewed them, and then we were kind of divided into teams, and then we were brought all together at the end for the tabulation process. And almost all of us stayed. I don't really, I didn't, I don't remember anybody leaving. They were very interested in seeing the results. And so there was this general sentiment that none of the above. We really weren't crazy about any of the candidates. No one rose to the top. We were not excited. This was subpar. We could do better. We're Lake Bluff, we can do better. And we also kind of, there was this general sentiment, we need to open up the criteria, really open it up. So I received, John, your email, and I'm just going to point out your LBS search criteria and rationale. Your original criteria. One, prior successful K-5 principal experience. Two, prior successful K-5 teaching experience. Three, desire to stay no less than five years. Four, salary ceiling of no more than $120,000, and current Illinois teaching and administrative license. The revised criteria, I don't believe that it was revised in any meaningful way, and this is why. Prior successful K-5 principal experience. It didn't change, except in quotations, you put strongly preferred, no less than five years' experience as a building principal. In addition, we strongly prefer a candidate who is already serving in a consistently high performing district and building in a comparable community to Lake Bluff. This is not a meaningful revision. Second revision you made was the stated expectation of longevity. You decided to take that out because you believed that any candidate who applies for this position recognizes that LBS is not a stepping stone. So basically, you were just saying that you didn't really need that criteria in the first place. Relax the salary ceiling to an as-yet-undetermined number based on individual circumstances. I don't get this, and I'll go back to that later. Rational out for change, it may become necessary to increase the salary of a favored candidate in order to secure their services. And out-of-state candidates are acceptable, although I think we only have two, so that's really not a meaningful change. So my question to you, John, is, were you at the same meeting as the rest of us? I think there is a general frustration from those of us who've served on committees, whether we're teachers, we're staying late after school, we're parents who are leaving work early or getting babysitters, so that we can devote our time and offer our input, and we sit on these committees that we're window dressing, and we're tired of it. That is not valuable input. We want our time to make a contribution, a valuable contribution. We want to be involved. It's just, we are done with that process, the way that you've been running things, we are done with it. I am scared for where Lake Bluff is heading with you at the helm. Kind of the way I wanted to describe this today is, the way I've read how in your, also in your letter that you wrote, in addition, we felt it was important to inform everyone that we have elected not to repost the position, so you're not opening up the candidate pool. So the way I kind of see it is, this is Lake Bluff's version of the big dance-off. The first round, we have the people who lost and then you make it to the second round. The second round, we have the three people who made it into the second round but still didn't win. And for the third round, we're going to go and bring back the losers from the first and second rounds and offer to pay them more money. Seriously? Seriously. You know, we do have people internally, and we have rugged times ahead, and I think we need to understand that leadership skills are sometimes more important than administrative skills. And I think we should consider these people. I know Eric Ellis and Kathleen Tomei have expressed interest in being candidates, and there are many people in this community who think they would be very promising candidates.
Annie, your time is up, so you need to wrap it up.
I just would like our voices to be heard. I think this community and what you've heard tonight from the first few speakers is that this sort of insular decision-making process is not how we work in Lake Bluff. We would like a collaborative effort, especially on the important decisions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Stewart. This is my husband, Jeff. We live at 326 East North Avenue in Lake Bluff. And we have a first grader who started back in kindergarten with a brand-new school. She had 16 students in her class. Since then, her class now is 23. So that's a 40% increase in class size in one year at a formative year. And our concern is that the class sizes are just too big at the younger ages. This prompted me to meet with Mrs. Williams. We had a nice discussion. And I went into it thinking, you know, hopefully, we can be on the same page and understand that these class sizes are a little bit too large. I came out of it with the understanding that I can expect that next year, my daughter's class will actually get bigger. My son is coming into kindergarten. And Mrs. Williams also got into a discussion with me about the class sizes in kindergarten as they are very large. The average is about 23, I understand. And because of that, I understand, the kindergarten teachers were sat down and they were, it was a discussion point of, what is your ideal teaching situation? The kindergarten teachers ideally would like to have their class sizes smaller and have their own class and not have an aide. Their second choice was then to have a full-time aide, and that's what was granted, as we know. What makes me very uneasy with these class sizes is that our down-the-street neighbors in Lake Forest, their class sizes are significantly less. The average class size in kindergarten is 17 in Lake Forest, and that's across the board in all of the nine schools, or three schools, excuse me, but several classes. Their average first grade is 17.4, and their average second grade is 19. This begs the question, I'm going to say this hypothetically, are our Lake Bluff students unfairly disadvantaged compared to Lake Forest when we know as parents they are going to be meeting in high school and they are going to be competing with these other Lake Forest students? So that prompted me to get into research. I like to read research. And basically, what I found is the state of Tennessee's, it's called the STAR Project. This was done in the mid-1980s, and I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but it's something that I highly recommend you Google and look it up. It's very interesting. Basically, the STAR research was a four-year study, K-3. There were 79 schools, and there were over 7,000 students involved in this. It was a sizable study. They broke the students into three different groups, small class sizes. Those class sizes were 13 to 17. Regular class sizes were considered 22 to 25. And then the third option was a regular class size, 22 to 25 with an aide. Across the board, what was shown was that the small class sizes did better, not only in the immediate term. So they were, they were given the standardized tests as students are, so the SAT and whatever's a Tennessee test. So right in the immediate term, they did better. Not only that, the eighth-grade students going into high school fared better on their examinations going into high school. Furthermore, what they even followed was that those students in the small classes actually, from high school, more of them went to college. More of them have become employed and are basically earning more money. So what this means to me is that I feel like we have got to come to an understanding that these little kids, they are, these are the building block times of their life. And I'm just concerned that they are not being given the individualized attention that they deserve. One other point that I want to make is that there was no statistically significant difference between those students that had aides versus those students that did not. With that being said, my husband has a few questions that he'd like to just throw out.
Yeah, Annie and I thought about three questions, which we had a lack of understanding. First, we know that after the teacher reductions, the guideline or target for the younger children was 20. That clearly has not been met. We'd like to understand what dynamics led to the inability to hit that guideline or target. Second question is, we'd like to understand, given what we believe is dramatic difference in K through 2 between Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, this is upward of a third difference or even 40% difference, does the board share our concern in terms of the competitiveness as we go into a single high school down the line? And lastly, we'd like to understand what plan of action or contingency is taking place within the planning to try to target the 20 guideline that was published to the community last year. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Any other public comments or questions?
Well, I mean, we can certainly get back to them on that. We can, where'd they go? Lost them. Oh, I'm sorry. We will get back to you in writing on this, and then we can also talk about it next month at the board meeting, so other people that don't get the letter can learn from that as well.
Maybe, you know, to be, why don't, to be fair to everybody, I think we're limited to one comment, five minutes. So there are other ways to communicate, though. Do you want to send an email?
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing. It'll take 30 seconds. I just wanted to point out that Nate Blackmer here is a very well-respected and just is a great principal. He's very good, and according to the current criteria that we have, he wouldn't even be offered a interview. And I just thought that should be food for thought.
Okay, thank you.
Anything any other board member would like to comment on?
Just to thank everyone who spoke and came, and we always appreciate it, even if sometimes it doesn't appear that way. We do appreciate your input very much, and we're wrestling with this, too.
Any others? All right, thank you again. Okay, on to our next agenda item, which would be PTO reports. Kate?
Hello. PTO update. I'll start with enrichment. We recently did a historical perspectives assembly, K through 5, and this was a full theatrical production on Amelia Earhart. The one comment I got at home was that it was overacted, but well-received. Also, at the elementary, we had the Wheel of Wisdom, which is like a trivia event for the kids. And we'd already had this at LBMS in February, and my understanding, too, is that this is very popular with the kids. Coming up, we have on April 8th, it's, we're celebrating National Storm Month at LBES. Again, an assembly K through 5. We've invited a local TV weather person to come and speak to the kids. Also, on April 25th, we're holding an astronomy program in, again, K through 5. And then May 6th at LBMS, The Sounds of Brazil will be enjoyed. So we recently had a small event last, this last weekend, and it turned out well, I'd like to say. Watch us grow. A big thank you to my co-chairs, Jerry Garrity, Heather Kerr, and Samina Wagner, and also the committee, including Jen Pedro, Jen, sorry, Chris Pedro, Jen Haran, and Kristen Clifford. And a big thanks to MJ, who not only built those beautiful flower signs, but also the art display, and put together our auction booklet. So thank you to everyone. Another big thank you, too, for everyone who came out, teachers, parents, community. We had great turnout. Our number- who came out: teachers, parents, community. We had great turnout. Our numbers are, we're still crunching, but it looks like we had about 269 attendees with 51 walk-ins. And the part that I'm most excited about is that we included the web store in this event this year. We sold tickets. 102 tickets were sold online in the web store. And currently, we're going through web store checkout, which made the whole evening much better for our volunteers at checkout in particular, but I think also for our attendees that could just leave and not worry about it. Web store checkout opened up today, and it's already going without a glitch, so I'm really, really excited about that. And then the other thing is that we are now trying to fill our slate for next year for PTO. So anyone who's interested in coming and joining us and working with us, we'd love to have you. Thanks.
Thanks, Kate. Dr. Asplin Superintendent Report.
Thanks, I'll be brief. Last month, I talked about the consolidation issue in Illinois that's come up, and a local flavor has been added. Nothing has moved to a stage that is serious yet, but it has not gone away. Senator Garrett has drafted some language that would exclude districts who undertake shared administrative services from consolidation. And Dr. Griffith from Lake Forest was asked to give testimony in Springfield last week, which he did. Nothing else has happened in that regard, at least as of this afternoon. So I don't know if that's going to go anywhere, but that was an interesting local flavor to that, to that law. As a reminder, under the original governor's plan, districts like Lake Bluff would be consolidated. There's a great amount of skepticism as to whether or not that's even practical, as he would go down to 300 districts and another plan would have them go to county districts. And that would mean a Lake County District, a Cook County District, a DuPage County District. Those would be quite large and quite cumbersome. I have a hard time believing that would happen. But at some point, you know, we have to keep looking at it because the state is looking at any way it can to save money. So we will keep on top of that issue. And at this point, that's, that's all that's happened. And the veto session next year would probably be when anything would get done, I would imagine, on this. But they'll probably be done with their session in about two months. And so there may be some things that move forward from then, but at this point, it doesn't seem like anything's moving too quickly. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Student Services and Curriculum, Dr. Wertz, Dr. Hendrickson.
Okay. We talked last month about the Student Assistance Program Coordinator being secured through a lead grant and matching funds through a donor of Lake Forest Hospital. And Deborah Ann Reimer has assumed that position, and she'll assist our social workers in our schools, and 67 and 115, in coordinating emotional wellness, student assistance programming, even things like this year, the eighth grade transition to the high school, since she's just coming on board in March. She's on the learning curve, but will be on board for a long time, so that'll be a great addition to help people in positions already in our buildings. The Special Ed Program Review is still underway with, again, Lake Forest, 67 and 115, to look at what are we doing for our kids? How can we do something differently? How can we do it better? We have great cooperation from NSSED. The program director has met with us numerous times. Will come to our parent meetings. The Parent Advisory Group has started, and they have met twice, and will meet again in April. And we'll have an open meeting at night, like we did in October, to explain the process and just update where we are in our learnings. And just want to thank publicly the LDA for sponsoring Jonathan Mooney. Came to the middle school, did a presentation to the students and staff, and then talked to staff, followed up with staff afterwards, and then did an evening presentation for parents, which was, the feedback that I received was really, really positive. And the LDA donated several of his books to us, so I have them available for checkout. Some of the teachers have asked for them, but publicly, if you, any parent, board member, teacher wants to borrow them and read them, just give me an email, and I'm happy to share.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to give a shout-out to my colleague Wendy Krieger, because it's just been a joy to see how she's worked with all the teachers in the elementary, supporting the Bridges and the Number Corner Project. You know, Janice Heigl's our math consultant, but Janice flies in from Oregon once a month, and Wendy carries the load. So it's been tremendous. I've seen all the emails of the teachers that have responded to, you know, how they're incorporating these programs into 2020 Vision, and how they're using these thinking, skill-oriented activities to further enhance our math program. As you know, we'll look at the Bridges program after, you know, it gets into its second year next year, but, boy, we have a lot of strong proponents. And maybe another shout-out to Tom Brown, who continues to create activities to support the project. So way to go. Spanish is continuing. Christie's here, Kristy Leifre is here. We got together, the Spanish teachers and I, a couple weeks ago, and had some really good discussions about how we could further enhance the kids' knowledge and fluency in Spanish. So we're looking probably in April to bring in, I'm kind of reviewing some consultants right now. We need a little bit of outside expertise on this, maybe a day of somebody to give us some suggestions at this point. So we're going to look for a day in April, probably, to put that together. Our Vision 2020 project is continuing with the whole faculty, study groups. Nate and Katie have been very generous with faculty meeting time. And we're, we're in this stage right now where it's, we're still trying to narrow, in some cases, what it is that we're, we're searching for. So there have been some very, very good discussions. Some groups are farther along than others. It continues to be a very worthwhile activity for us to do because it's all about the students and how we're going to try to make differences for students with self-directed learning. So more to report on that in the future. I wanted to throw it to Nate for a minute. Nate had Jonathan Mooney come, and Nate can tell you about him.
Thank you. As Anne mentioned already, excuse me, Jonathan Mooney did come to present not only to the faculty, but we had the unique experience of having him first present to our entire student body. For those of you who don't know Jonathan Mooney, he's the author of two books. One is Reading Between the Lines. The other is The Short Bus: A Journey Beyond Normal. He spoke to our students about some of his struggles through school, how he, not until the age of 12, really had the ability to read or write, and then eventually went on to find success, moved on to Brown University, and really told a lot of meaningful stories that our kids connected with, talked a lot about working toward their own strengths, never giving up, not being afraid to ask for help. There were a lot of really great messages that he was able to deliver to our students. Immediately following that presentation, we were able to hear from him as a faculty, and, and he spoke with us about making connections with students, never giving up on students, certainly helping us to identify what those students' strengths may be, even if they don't know what they are just yet. And I think that our staff and our students certainly benefited from that day, and I definitely want to thank the LDA for sponsoring his visit. It was really a great opportunity for, for the middle school. So, and thank you, Anne Wertz, for helping to organize that as well.
Thanks, Nate. So coming up, oh, excuse me, one other thing we did this month was the math teachers in the middle school got together with Lake Forest High School and District 67 math teachers to discuss articulation across the three schools, primarily of eighth to ninth, and how we're servicing our kids to make sure they're doing as well as they can. We've got good reports from Tom Maher in the high school, and we're continuing to emphasize ways of getting more and more kids into algebra. So the teachers spent half the day working together with the high school, and then half the day working on their own, looking at ways to increase what we're doing here in Lake Bluff. I was really pleased with the energy and some of the ideas that are coming out of that. More to report on that in the months to come. If it would be okay, can I speak from Lake Forest's perspective on the class size issue? First of all, I want to say your, your numbers were right on. The class averages that you spoke of are true. In kindergarten, the class average is 17 right now in Lake Forest, but it's a little bit, you know, I need to share a little bit more, too. The reason it's 17 right now is that Lake Forest offers a full-day program and half-day morning option and a half-day afternoon option to parents. And whenever they can, they honor those options. And so within that 17, we've got a class of 13, a class of 11, and a class of 14, which are parent preferences of either AM or PM. And so instead of saying to parents, you know, this isn't as economical, we decided to go ahead and offer the class at those lower numbers, because, you know, that's certainly a good thing to do. We do have classes in Lake Forest of 20, 21, and 21. So three of the nine classes are at that 20 or higher number that I know that a lot of the research focuses on. It's not to say that we don't agree that smaller is better. We certainly all agree. I'd also like to speak from my Deerfield experience, where I was for 10 years, and at South Park Elementary, where I was the principal for seven of the 10, the Deerfield policy was a max of 25. I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong. The Deerfield policy was, at 25, a teacher got an assistant. So during my seven years there as South Park principal, we had several years, we were at 24, 25, and one year even 26 in one of the classes, at which time we, we, you know, had the help of an assistant in those classrooms. Deerfield's a very high-performing district, just like Lake Bluff, just like Lake Forest. And in fact, the point spread in ISAT at third grade is, is maybe two-point difference. So it isn't all about class size. I, I read this Tennessee STAR study, I did a little research, too, and it was a very well-done study. It was also done, though, in 1985. And since then, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Deerfield, probably Tennessee as well, have instituted lots of intervention programs. Our, our reading program, for example, for K1, 2, is, I don't know how long we've had it here, but it's not been in 1985. These are the types of things that districts have done to make sure that we reach the achievement for all students. Our, our enrichment consultants, Wendy Krieger, working with kindergarten teachers, first-grade teachers, pulling out kids once in a while. We have so many more support staff nowadays than we used to. So the critics of class size making the difference will say, there may be more economical ways to service children. I'm not going to step in the fray, but I'm going to throw that out there and say that as an elementary principal, too, I realize the struggle at South Park was that if you get a rush of, of people at the end, kindergarten registration is at the end, here's what you're faced with. You've already identified your kindergarten teachers. So now you're faced with the challenge of saying to the parents, well, the good news is, we're going to lower class sizes by adding a teacher. The bad news is, you get the new teacher. And that's, that's a difficult pill to swallow for, for many parents, because they know who the teachers are, and a new teacher sounds scary to them. And we all know it's the teacher that really makes the biggest difference. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say class size isn't important. I know, John, you even had put it on our agenda for last month, that this is a discussion we need to begin for next year. So we're certainly, we're certainly on board with you on this. I think that's it. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your point was remarkable. Did I get this point to respond to that or not?
No. We'll be able to have more discussions next month, also. This is going to continue for a little bit.
No, no.
I agree.
I'd like to hear what you guys think.
There should be, if he's going to get up and speak, there should be a chance for the parents to respond.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Next month.
When does it end?
I think a lot of us have taken issue with some of the things.
Time for public comments.
The time for public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Can I say something as a parent of a kindergarten?
No.
I really, I really think that this is an issue that people should be aware of. And I know there's a lot of backing for it. I'd like to clarify, maybe from the parent's point of view, what this whole class size issue is really about. 30 seconds?
Well, I think what we need to do is, we need to have a discussion among board members right here about what is our plan for next year? What is our timing? What is our enrollment process?
Yeah, we'll get to this.
And that is coming on you business when we talk about.
I just want to, just really quickly, let me just say that. I think that the last meeting where we were discussing class size, there was some adamant comments about, we're going to really keep it at the Illinois State average, which was, what, 21? And now we've got 23, 24, 25, 26 students to a class. I, it is, I'm aware of the fact that there are some kids that were taken from half-day and put in full-day and had the fees waived. And as a parent of somebody that paid for my child to go full-day, I, I don't understand why that was okay and why that wasn't ever discussed. I think that that's really sneaky, and I don't appreciate that. You don't know how people came up with the money to get their kids in full-day classes.
Okay. Alison, we will address that point when we get to, we'll talk about how we got there, so, thank you.
That's a big, that's a big issue for a lot of kindergarten parents, and that's something that does need to be addressed.
Okay, getting back on to our agenda, please.
No, no.
Time for comments is at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm so sorry. We are going to.
We need to have some order.
We asked if there were extra comments.
...that the children are within the classroom, and I think that that should be considered as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Kim, is it safe to say, because you've committed us to be discussed, is it safe to say that we will be looking at some ways for additional input?
Yes.
Into that discussion?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's extremely necessary at this point.
Yes.
And we don't know exactly what those methods or ways will be, but, you know, I think we've got to do that.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
That's where Dr. Kirklo's comments are coming from, that it's extremely concerning to, to, to.
To further expand on yours, Al, we need it from parents, we need it from stu, from staff, we need it from all the people who are involved.
Right.
Yeah. All right, moving on. President Report, I will defer for this evening on anything standing committees. MJ and Al, 2020 Vision?
The committee itself has not met. I think that Dr. Hendrickson referenced two or three of the efforts that fit within that in his report, but the committee itself has not met since last week.
Okay. Thank you. MJ, NSSED?
NSSED did meet, and really, the, the big thrust of most of the work right now is budget planning, which, of course, is a little bit more complicated this year because the NSSED is looking at things in several different directions, depending on some of the choices that we may make in our investigation of our service provisions, so.
Finance.
Should, should we just wait a second, so people are leaving, because what we're talking about is important, and I don't want us, our voices not to be heard on television for those watching, so.
Hard for me to hear.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't, so, thank you, MJ.
Thanks, man.
Okay. Finance and Facilities Committee?
Well, we did meet on February 25th, which is a few days after the February board meeting, and as promised, we are going to come back and review a couple of things, one being the online registration proposal that was made by Lori Brown and Kathleen Reedy. While the Finance and Facilities Committee did appreciate the effort that they put into it and understood the added convenience that it may provide to parents in the district, we just didn't see the wherewithal at this point in time going alone as a single district and spending the money that would require when we couldn't see any financial offset to that. So what we asked Kathleen and Lori to do is to, to continue to evaluate this, but to continue to work with their colleagues in both districts in Lake Forest, 67, 115, and hopefully by, in a year's time, they would also agree that maybe it was the right thing to do. And with our collaborative efforts, we thought perhaps we'd get a much better discount, if you will, on collaborating with them than what we currently are seeing. So effectively, we asked them to defer, well, we deferred the decision to go forward with this, because, again, in light of everything else that we could spend our money more appropriately on, we thought that wouldn't be the right decision at this time. The other item that we talked about was the East School Frontis, which is the facade and the doorway of the East School, and this is also going to be covered in our bold business section of the agenda, so we'll defer that discussion until then.
Thank you. Strategic Plan?
Nothing.
Okay. Green Team?
Did not meet.
Okay. Social Committee?
Did not meet.
Okay. Onto Action Items, Personnel Recommendations.
I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel recommendations as per the attachment.
Second.
Okay. John, if you could give us a brief summary, please?
Sure. We have a resignation of Amber Youngman, who has been on maternity leave for a while, speech-language pathologist at Lake Bluff Elementary, effective at the end of this year. To employ Lindsay Schaffner at Lake Bluff Middle School as a long-term substitute for seventh and eighth-grade Spanish, effective March 7th. To employ Cassandra Cawkins at Lake Bluff Elementary School as an early childhood resource special education long-term sub, effective April 12th. To accept the retirement letter of Tom Beck, Lake Bluff Elementary School art teacher, effective June 2015. To approve the leave of absence of Buffy Stoffer, Lake Bluff Elementary School reading specialist for the 2011-2012 school year. To approve a leave of absence, leave of absence for child rearing for Mandy Noble, Lake Bluff Elementary School kindergarten teacher for the 2011-2012 school year. And to approve a leave of absence for maternity and child rearing for Chris And to approve a leave of absence for maternity and child rearing for Christine Leibfried, Lake Bluff Elementary School Spanish teacher, effective September 12th, 2011 through June 2012.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Kim Burke?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Kearney? Yes. Al Fifeaus?
Yes.
Eric Renay?
Yes.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Okay. Next would be the action item for the approval of bids for construction project.
I move that the Board of Education accepts the low base bid from Bergen Construction in the amount of $669,000 and award them a contract for the East School demolition and the LBMS renovation project.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
As you saw by the document, we got several bids. We were very happy with the bids. Bergen came in low bid. We've done our homework. We've checked references. We did have a scope review meeting with them. They're comfortable with their bid. They're going to stand by it, and we're within budget, so we're recommending that base bid, and then we'll talk about alternate bids here in a second.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay. And timeframes all laid out?
If you approve this this evening, then we'll get a contract done hopefully in the next couple of days. And then we told them we could turn the billing over to them after April 1st. At that time, they'll get fencing up and try to get to work, mobilize.
Okay. Terry, roll call vote, please?
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Eric Renay?
Yes.
Al Fifeaus?
Yes.
Terry Kearney?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Kim Burke?
Yes. Okay. Another motion related to construction project. Do we have alternate bids? We need a motion?
You have several alternate bids, and so your final action item is going to include which of these alternate bids you care to approve.
Is that something we do tonight, Jane, or is that-
You need to do this tonight, yes.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education accepts the following alternate bids from Bergen Construction for a total of the dollars that Jane is going to- To make the motion, it's kind of hard to have a discussion before you make the motion, but you need to make a motion to approve certain bids. And we've numbered them 1, 2, 3, 4 that we're recommending. If you want to make a motion to approve the four and get a second, then we can discuss. Then if there's any change in that, we can make a change.
All right. So I recommend, I move that the Board of Education accepts the following alternate bids from Bergen Construction. Alternate bid 1, remove all foundations. Alternative bid number 2, remove all floor tiles. Alternate bid 3, refacing cabinets in three rooms. Alternate 4, demo the water tank for a total of $64,750. Someone second that, please?
Second.
Okay. Now, Jane, if you could-
Okay. Now then, those are the, we've got several alternate bids, but those are the four that administration is recommending. I'm sorry, Herb, I have to face away from the microphone. Removing all foundations, this is something that the board had discussed earlier on. Should someday there ever be some construction on that place or that lot, you're going to have to remove the foundations anyway. It's cheaper to do it now than charge a board in the future at some point in time. Remove all floor tiles, this is in the bathrooms at the middle school. Some of the tiles, the floors in the lower level are really in pretty good shape. However, they are really old. You're doing a full facelift in these bathrooms. These are student bathrooms, anyway. So we asked for the alternate bid to go ahead and replace the floor tiles on both the first and second floor. We're recommending it just because it's the kids' bathrooms, and they've been nasty for a long time. I've just put you in a corner, I know, but. Refacing the cabinets in the three science classrooms. An alternate bid was to replace the cabinets in one room and reface two. We felt that bid was just exorbitantly high, and Mr. Blackmon and I discussed it, and we're very comfortable in recommending just refacing cabinets in all three classrooms. Demo the water tank in the storage area, that just gives us more storage space, and that's a, you know, a couple thousand dollars, so.
That's a tank that is not currently in use.
Correct, correct, correct. So that's why we're recommending those four alternate bids, and it still brings us within our construction budget.
And we had talked about a tank being a possibility, of a tank being buried.
There is a possible underground storage tank on, somewhere behind East School. We have not been able to identify the fact that there is one. If we come across one during construction, it's a possibility. Got a little contingency money set aside, and we'll deal with it when and if we come across it. The state Fire Marshal's Office, when I went online, does indicate that there was a tank there. It's not been used since 1972. We know at some point in time there was an oil pit in a garage. That could be what they are identifying as an underground storage tank. We don't, certainly don't believe it held, you know, fuel, gasoline, or anything like that.
Jane, can we go back to the removal of the floor tiles at the middle school?
Yes.
How much of that is cosmetic versus how much are there serious issues with?
A lot of it is cosmetic. And I think I sent the board-
Pictures.
Pictures? Okay.
I've been there many times.
Okay. A lot of it is cosmetic, especially in the lower level. I mean, the tiles are in good shape. The grout, not so much. When we do the work, we're going to have to do some patching in some areas on the floor anyway, which certainly we could do with some, you know, kind of pattern or whatever. On the main floor, especially, I don't know how to do this any more delicately, but around the urinals, it's, the tiles themselves are in fine shape, but the mortar is not good. It's, we're just recommending, you know, you do what you want, but we're recommending that we give the bathrooms a full facelift.
Isn't any alternative between the facelift and do nothing? Or is there?
Well, you, I mean, you could. We could take out part of it and replace it, but you're, you know. Well, I don't know, Terry, honestly, Terry, I don't know what the cost differential would be to do the work and, you know, you're going to still have labor, you're going to pay for a little different materials, but how much of that, once they get to tearing it up, they could save and reuse? I don't, I honestly just can't answer that question.
And included in our renovation project at the middle school is what in regards to the bathrooms already?
It's new toilets, partitions, sinks. They're doing some new lighting, ceiling, tile.
I was just going to say, I did take the opportunity to go over and tour some of the washrooms. I think I would concur with Jane. You know, at first I looked at the tile, I thought, gee, these tiles look pretty good, but the closer I looked, began seeing grout lines, missing tile, or cracked tile here. It is a tough call because, you know, it's money. But I think I would suggest that we go ahead and replace them at this point as opposed to having to come back in five years or so and have a job.
The reason we did this as an alternate bid, number one, we don't know how the bids are going to come in, and this gives us some flexibility. Should the bids have come in a little high, you know, this would be one thing that we wouldn't have to take. But the bids did come in favorably, so in case you're wondering why it was an alternate bid and not just thrown in there, this gives us some flexibility not knowing how bids will come in.
Are there potentially economies of scale in having it included in this particular job as opposed to a standalone job five, six years down the line when-
I certainly think it's always cheaper to do today than it would be later. And then, Jane, are we going to talk at all about any of the bids that we're not recommending that we accept? In what way, as far as dollars? There were some other alternates that we asked them to figure- The other alternate bids, one was the 26,000, that was to replace cabinets in one science room and reface the others. And we just didn't feel that that was really a good bang for our buck. Improvements to the former band room. It was-
Basement band room.
Yeah, the former, yeah, band room in the basement. We looked at doing some work to try to raise some ceiling height, as what little bit we could, and gain some space. So potentially that could be used for coral to allow for some of the, thank you. But it really, and that was $27,000. And I spoke with, I know I'm going to pitch in the spots, Nate, but we did speak, and we just felt $27,000 really didn't get us anything as far as better educational space to use. So we are not, we are not making that recommendation at this time. And the other alternate bid, there are two bathrooms on the main floor that are not accessible, $7,100 to make them accessible, but we have accessible bathrooms that are centrally located on the main floor of the building, anyway. That was just something we wanted to take a look at. We're not recommending to do that.
Yeah, just from my perspective, bathrooms, to me, have as much impact on just the feeling of a building as any in a building. And for cleanliness and just general feel of the school, I think the impact is significant when you upgrade to bathrooms.
Kids are really looking forward to it.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
It's time. It's time.
So if you're going to hide in the bathroom, you want it nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional discussion on the alternate bids?
Well, how are we going to do this relative to which ones we vote on? Because there's four of them here. If we agree with three but don't agree with the fourth?
Should we just do them individually?
Well, you already have a motion, so you need to vote on that motion. And then if you want to change the motion, if it's defeated, then you can do that.
And the motion is to approve the recommendations of the administration?
Of all four alternate bids.
Right, right, right. That's what's on the table right now.
So that would be alternate bid 1, removing all foundations; 2, removing all floor tiles; 3, refacing three cabinets in three rooms;
Okay, I got you.
And 4, demo the water tank, $64,750. Jane, by adding, one last question, by adding this to the base bid, we are still within budget?
Absolutely.
All four. Okay. Okay. Terry, roll call, please.
Kim Burke?
No.
Mary Jane Brady?
No.
Terry Kearney? No. Al Fifeaus?
Yes.
Eric Renay?
No.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
No.
Okay. So now we have a revised motion I will make that the Board of Education accepts the following alternative bids from Bergen Construction. Alternative bid 1, remove all foundations. Alternative bid 2, remove all floor tiles. Alternative, I'm sorry. Strike that. Alternative bid 1, remove all foundations. Alternative bid 3, reface cabinets in three rooms. Alternative bid 4, demo the water tank. Second?
Second.
So that would be a total of 705-
$36,250.
Everything but the bathroom floors.
So $36,250.
Right. Coming off, or going on. Okay? Any discussion?
Well, when I think about it, and I know there's a feeling that everything should be brand-new, but I also have two boys, and I know how they aim as well, and I wonder about, you know, how long this mortar and all that stuff stays in place, anyway. And I think, you know, a more practical thing in the budget constraints that we have is to look at either not doing anything because there's no safety issue, per se, and save the money for other applications, or look at a more, less expensive approach to, if the grout is really grubby-looking, to look at replacing the grout. But if the floor tiles are in perfectly good shape, they're probably sentenced to mend, anyway. It's, you know, it just, it seems it's hard for me to say that's the way you're going to spend $28,000. So if it's not, if it was safety-related, there'd be no doubt in my mind what to do. That's my discussion for what it's worth.
Any comments? Folks, have?
As a member of the Fiscal Austerity Committee, I'm, again, every dollar that we spend in this district counts, and I do think that, to the extent that it is something that we could address in a slightly more economical manner, I think it's something that we should really consider.
You must want to add anything? Jane, can we get bids for some alternative things to do?
We'll investigate, certainly, something that we can do, especially in specific areas of the bathrooms. Absolutely.
Great. Terry, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Kim Burke?
Kim, what are we voting on?
Now, we're voting on approving the three alternate bids. Removing the foundation, the refacing of the three cabinets, demoing the water tank, with Jane's direction to go and get alternative bids for the floor tiles at the middle school.
That's what I thought the discussion was all about.
Yes.
That's why I would say the topic.
Yes. So our alternative bids now goes down to $36,250 is what we would be approving.
Includes rejecting the second item?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't catch that personally.
Yes, yes, at the 28.5.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kim Burke? Oh, sorry.
Any other questions? Okay. Kim Burke, yes?
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Kearney, yes. Al Fifeaus?
No.
Eric Renay?
Yes.
Corinne Torkelson?
No.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next action item would be possible action as a result of the earlier executive session. There is none. We can now go on to consent agenda. I move to approve the following items on the consent agenda as posted on the screen and listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these?
Nope.
John, one question. We have the application for institute approval days. Is that just a formal process that we follow every year?
You have to do that every year, yes.
Okay. And this is for next school year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Terry, roll call, please.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Eric Renay?
Yes.
Al Fifeaus?
Yes.
Terry Kearney, yes. Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Kim Burke? Kim Burke?
Yes. Okay, on to new business. Let's do kindergarten class sizes. Expanded discussion.
Sure, thank you. A few months back, I sat with Dr. Wurtz and Katie Williams and the kindergarten teachers, and we talked about different plans for going forward with kindergarten in regard to class size. And next month, unless some sea-change happens, we were going to recommend moving the half-time position to full-time, at the very least. What that would do, it would give us flexibility to offer, to more quickly respond to a growing enrollment in half-day if we have it, to be able to quickly go to that scenario. In the event that we don't need a second half-day program, that half-day teacher who would be going to full day, let's say, half-day kindergartens in the morning, in the afternoon, that teacher could then go into the classrooms and help with reading, or help with other kids that need more intensive help. And so, at a minimum, we're asking to go from three and a half to four teachers, with the realization that we may need to add a fifth teacher if enrollment dictated it. So this was just about kindergarten tonight, not knowing all of this was gonna come up about first grade. Certainly, we'll need to extend this to other grades as well. But what we were prepared to talk about tonight was just this half-day to full-day, moving that person, or that position, to a half-time to a full-time position for that purpose, for the flexibility, and then to, if we don't have a second half-day program, to then give that person an opportunity to go into the classrooms and work with the kids who have more difficulties, I guess would be the way to put it, to have more exigent needs.
Okay, can we take a step back and let's talk, and Katie, Nate, John, if we could ask, you guys, talk about our process for, what do we do with timeframes, with predicting class sizes, and moving forward next year? How, Anne, if you could chime in, on how we evaluate the special ed and the resources needed for that, so that we have a complete picture with timeframes of one that typically happens, and kind of what we're looking at doing for next year?
Sure. Katie, you wanna go ahead and start? We'll start with the elementary.
Get the microphone, yeah.
Katie sent out an email just today. Actually, while Katie's looking for that, Nate, why don't you talk about middle school, if you're prepared to do that?
We both need the microphone.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, that's where she's going, I apologize.
When we take a look at kindergarten registration, it starts in February. Doesn't give us a full picture in February. It continues on through the summer. So we look at past enrollment, and then what we have registered so far. So right now, working with kindergarten teachers, working with John, working with everyone, we anticipate three full-time, one, or possibly two half-time, and then have to respond to numbers. So if I'm remembering correctly, I believe right now we have fifty-three full-time children enrolled, and twelve half-day children enrolled. So you can see that what we have early on in the spring to what we may have in August can be significantly different. And so throughout each month, June, July, and August, I report to Dr. Asplin what is the enrollment at the time, and what is the best recommendation for proceeding, whether we increase or stay at what we have. Does that?
How do we screen incoming kindergarteners for any anticipated interventions that we may need? Is there a process for doing that with these children before they arrive, or do we do anything with that?
There's no formal screening, there has been no formal screening before they arrive, but we've talked about doing something different before school starts. The kindergarten teachers had a proposal to Dr. Asplin about how to get that done right before school starts, or maybe the first couple of days of school, depends on exactly how it works out. When school starts, the kindergarten teachers do a lot of assessment, and the speech pathologists do an assessment of every child in kindergarten.
Well, and sorry, Anne, but just that, so people know, the proposal is, and kindergarten teachers, if I get this wrong, you're here, thank goodness. The proposal is basically to move that assessment piece from during school to before school, so that we're not scrambling the first week and trying to figure, oh my goodness, we didn't know we had X, Y, or Z. And so their proposal, which would be part of, you know, next month's proposal, would include that extra, small outlay of money to certainly pay the ladies for their time to come in a couple of days prior to school starting to get these assessments done, with the hope that certainly those parents could get their children to school to get that done.
I think actually, as we were taking a look at the proposal, those first two days would be the typical two days that children would be in session. The first is a half-day, and we would use that day as a testing. So it wouldn't be kindergarten class in session for that half-day, but actually finishing up some assessment.
Right, right.
So we'd still have a meet-the-teacher, and then two days that kindergarten students would start later, so we could have the most current information. Along with that, parents fill out an inventory, and so it gives us some information as we're taking a look at groupings. And also, the kindergarten teacher, along with Kathleen, have gone to the nursery schools and do some observations and gather some information. As you well know, parents know the kindergarten children much better than we do as we're organizing those kindergarten classrooms. So we try to gather as much information as possible, and also try to get the word out to register earlier than later, so we have a better handle on how many sections are needed.
Well, that's gonna be, my next question is, we sit here every year, and we have this same issue. I mean, today we have sixty-five kids registered. Have we done studies? I mean, why, why the delay in registering? I don't get it.
I wish I had a good answer for that, I really do. You know, we have advertised in several of the Patch, gazebo, Pioneer Press. We ask parents, if you have a neighbor that has a kindergarten student, you know, be sure to remind them that they should register. I do think, again, some parents think that registration is, you know, either the week before or the day of school, and that may seem unusual to us, but it isn't so unusual to other parents. So it's, it's difficult to say there's a deadline. We're a public school, so a public school has to accept children if they register before the day of, or even the afternoon of. And then we work with the parents to think about, how can we make sure we make some good decisions before putting your child into a classroom.
Katie, we're also looking at our numbers for first and second grade, too, for how many sections we might need of those, correct?
Yes, and as we take a look at kindergarten going into first grade, again, right now, you would have what would be typically four sections of kindergarten, and we have four and a half sections of first grade, because you think about that as the four traditional, and then the one multi-age, first and second grade. And so right now, if nothing changed, the class size going into first grade would be twenty point five, you know, so again, twenty.
In four classrooms?
In twenty-one, that would be four.
And four traditional and one.
That would be four traditional plus one, two combination. But then again, that doesn't, as we're taking a look at this, and information has been shared, it doesn't take into account if there are parents that have their children in private kindergarten programs, and then they're changing over to the public school. It seems that each week now, I am touring at least one new parent, or Lake Bluff parent that's considering coming to Lake Bluff Public School. And so, you know, of course, I have a delightful time touring and talking about the school, but I always encourage them, please register earlier than later. Give me a call for any of your decision-making, that I can help, any questions that you may have. But again, we don't always have control over when someone actually registers. That's why we actually, we keep kind of a list at school of people that have said, yes, we'll be there, that may be slightly different than the fully registered. So we're trying to take a look at that, and also call those parents to say, you know, have you filled out registration yet? We can't really take a look at the sections needed unless they're actually registered, not promising to come, but actually on our books. And sometimes that, again, is a little difficult, so we try to communicate even by phone call to say, hey, have you had a time, or a chance to fill out the papers or get to the district office?
Two questions. One on multi-age. What are the parent deadlines for the current kindergarten wanting to go into multi-age for first grade, and then also third-grade parents wanting to go into fourth, so we'll have a better idea of what the layout may look like next year?
We'd like to know by mid-April.
Okay.
Whether or not a parent, and we ask them for a preference of whether they'd like to consider the multi-age or the traditional. So then that lets us know, right now, as you know, we have one multi-age in grade one, two, and we have four multi-age in grades four and five. So again, there are some new parents that may want that option. If we are looking at, we don't have a full class list, then we take a look at new parents that may be interested, or if we already have an indication of people that want multi-age that are already on, are reoccurring parents coming back again, we would place parents that are in our system first, and then take a look at new parents for either one. So I think what, if what you're asking me is, it's an ongoing process, so if we don't have the exact class list mid-April, we don't look at placing kids in class lists until mid-May.
Okay.
And then that's a whole process with teachers. Parents now know that I put out an open door, please send me a letter if you have any indication or environmental things that you would want us to consider with class placement. But that class placement, again, we have, we work with who we know will be there for the two thousand eleven, twelve school year, and then it fluctuates even up to sometimes the first day of school. So again, the communication that I would send, or the new principal would send to John, then helps think about, okay, where's the tipping point of when we decide that we need to add an additional section? That could be later, earlier, depending on registration. Did I answer your question?
She went into it.
She went into it, okay. So I guess I have two general questions for all of us to consider in terms of policy, because what we, obviously is very apparent, is that there's a lot of unknowns. So we just could not know exact numbers until the first day of school, or even the first week of school. But what we do know, or what we can know to establish, is if, as a board, we have a policy on our numbers. So I think the community is asking, and the teachers, are we in fact, going back to what was said in February of two thousand ten about the class sizes of twenty? And then, that's the discussion I think we as a board need to have. Because regardless, in my opinion, regardless of what happens August twentieth, if we have the policy in place, then we make the change necessary on August twenty-first. There will be teachers who are still, unfortunately, unemployed on August twenty-first or August twenty-fifth, who could be very good candidates to take in another position. And I also know from a fiscal responsibility of our budget, that that's something that we always are gonna keep in mind, but we as, making that policy on the number, need to keep our budget in mind, and also what we feel is the right thing to do for the best of our kids. So we as a board really do need to talk about that, and I think that's what the community wants to hear us talking about, and then they wanna hear us stick to that, and as we go forth with that policy, whatever we decide. But I think we need to be really clear on what our policy is. And if we have a number, then we should stick by that number, and we go under that number, then so be it, but that's just the way it would have to work out with late registration. So I would like to have a conversation about that, and I know that Dr. Asplin has provided us with a five-year class size enrollment history, so we have those numbers in front of us. We've heard some very good comments from teachers and parents tonight, as well as our administrators. So I think that at some point tonight, I'd like to find out what we're going to do about this in the near future.
You know, I'll, just from a context standpoint, one month short of being on the board for eight years, and we have never, since I've been on the board, actually established a formal enrollment policy where we've published it and provided it. So in John's defense, administration's defense, they've been doing this, and previous administrations had, without a specific policy from the board. And we've always had kind of, you know, general targets to keep it steady, and I looked back at two thousand four, and two thousand four, we, we were closer to where we were the last couple of years on the K in first and second, and then the three, four, five, those were all up in the twenty-two, twenty-three. So we've tried to maintain that pretty steadily, but without any policy. And so I would, I would say that is something that the board really should take on, because the administration needs to have that information. Now, I know late, last summer, we had something like ten or eleven kids drop in, and what happened is they had it established for eighty students, and it went up to ninety-one. And I also understand why you put three classrooms in there, because we were also expecting declining enrollment. We're seeing declining enrollment, and when we've got eighty people signed up a couple weeks before school, or whatever it was, a month before, it was consistent with what we've been seeing. But again, there was no policy that I'm aware of, that the board has provided the administration to act if something like that happens. So what occurred doesn't actually surprise me, given what we've established. I also know, factually anyway, that there is, is no board policy and no administration policy to deliberately raise class sizes as a result of our financial or fiscal condition. That was not something we asked you to do, and it's not something that we intend to do, and as far as I'm concerned, and we'll have some discussions. Maybe it is something we want to do, but it's not something we've done to date. So those are my comments.
Katie, thank you, you can sit down. Nate, can you, before we get into this discussion, can you just give us an overview, Nate, of...
May I add one piece of information?
You have to use the microphone.
Yeah.
Thanks. Over the last two years, we have had twelve new students come into first grade from Montessori, Deer Haven, and so forth. So it's an additional, more than twelve?
No, there's been more years than I started.
More years, but the last I've tracked has been at least twelve, so I think you can add an additional twelve. The other thing is that way back when I first started, years ago, we did add an additional section after the school year started, and it was really tough for parents, but what we did is we took the oldest children, and we said, this will be your new teacher, and this will work out, and people loved it, because we had class sizes that were twenty-five and twenty-six in the K one. And so it has been done in the past and done well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Nate, if you could just give us an overview on how you manage placement and class sizes? I know it's a different beast than the elementary school, but just so we have an understanding of our whole district.
Yeah, we have a very good, a very good idea of the number of students that we'll have enrolled in each grade level, so that's not as much an issue for us. The variables that drive the decisions with regard to the master schedule and where sections will be offered would include world language, so the French or Spanish choice of the incoming sixth grade, special ed needs, and then also math placement recommendations. That process is underway. There's a five-point rubric that's used. Not all of the criteria in that rubric have been completed yet, so we will hopefully have all those math recommendations wrapped up after I sat test, excuse me, after map testing in May. But those are the big variables that kind of drive our class sizes.
And can you comment about needs assessment and how it's ongoing, or what the process is, just in...
For providing special services? Yeah, especially now with having consistent data from CBMs and NWA, at least we can look at how many students we have in lower quartiles and project what we need for support for them. And our special ed numbers are a little different because of response to intervention, RTI, because we are not identifying a significant number of students at the early elementary primary grades, but they still need support to close the gap and make progress. Over time, if they don't do that, then we do identify them and give them a special education identification. But we just look at what we have, how many students need help, really test scores help support the need to, that we need to continue the number of providers that we have or don't or... And with three to five-year-olds, we have a pretty good idea because of the early identification system within the state. So we have an idea of students with significant needs coming to us before they get here.
John, can you comment on our...
Just one other thing that I wasn't sure if I made clear is that, then with administration, we do take a look at the scenarios. What if current registration progressed the children to the next grade level? We had three sections, four sections, five sections. What would the class size be to help take a look at what's, what's the best decision?
You referring to the scenario of this larger-sized kindergarten going to first grade? Is that the...
Correct, correct. And so taking a look at the number of students that we have, but again, that doesn't account for, we do know that there are children that are in private kindergarten programs that may not register until later. But at least with the numbers that we have, if we have four sections, if we have five sections, what would the class size be, and where's our best decision? Kind of goes back to you're taking a look at class size and what's a good policy for that.
Before we get into policy discussion, could you comment on our policy of the waiver children half-day to full-day?
Right.
That's been around for two years?
No, just this year.
Just this year, okay.
And we did discuss it, Allison. I mean, it was discussed in a board meeting. That it was a recommendation from, I believe, teachers, if, you know, that it came from the building at some point, regarding kids that were in half-day programs, were the kids, a lot of the times, were the kids that couldn't afford full-day programs, certainly there's others, but that those kids, a lot of times, were the ones that needed extra service, extra help, extra things of that sort. And two years ago, maybe where you're getting to two years, we started receiving Title money, Title I money. And Title I money's for low-income students. And so when we started taking an accurate count of our Title I kids through our registration process, we were able to flow some money through to pay basically the tuition for those kids. But that money is paid through a federal grant for low-income children, to try to get them more help in an all-day setting, so that they would benefit in grades one through twelve and beyond. And that was discussed last July or August, I don't remember which one.
Great, thank you, John.
Yeah.
All right, you wanna start the discussion on...
Well, I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, we have, the administrators are here, I mean, we're here, I mean, I'm an educator, but I'm really here as a board member to hear the, from the experts who are in the classrooms now and the administrators. Do we want to be, and this is, definitely goes back to the budget, again, do we want to be in a position where we say, K two, the cap is, I'll just throw out, twenty, and then three, five, it's, I mean, I don't, no, twenty-three? I'm, I'm looking for us to have a discussion, and it doesn't necessarily, a decision doesn't necessarily have to be made today, because this is a healthy discussion, and I'm trying to get information, but if we all talk about this without it being on television, then people don't believe we're having the conversations, which is unfortunate, because we have been talking about this, but no resolution has been made, so I'm just trying to publicly, and with great transparency, make this discussion that we are wanting to get somewhere with this sooner than later, so that these decisions can be made for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve and ongoing years. So I guess that's as much as I can get started.
I have a suggestion, just to get it started, that if you wanna set guidelines, excuse the number twenty, in K through two, that if we hit that in all enrollments, that it would trigger some sort of action. It doesn't have to be an absolute action. That it would trigger us to recommend to the board that we have a special board meeting to look at the issue, to invite in the teachers, to look at, I mean, just whatever. It would trigger some transparent process where decision-making was done. It would trigger some transparent process where decision-making was done. I worry about making it hard and fast, okay, another teacher, maybe doesn't warrant it. Maybe we know that kid's only a mere for a month. I mean, there are things that happen that, maybe that's not the best idea. But it would definitely compel us to do something, to go forward and say, "Here's what our enrollment's going to be, here's the teacher's input, here's the, what we know about the kids," in a way that we could do it in an open setting. And this is what it would do fiscally, this is what the classroom space is, this is how many classrooms we have open, this is what it would mean to Spanish, or this is what it would mean to the janitorial staff, or what. I mean, there's all the other things that are intertwined with that. And if we hit that trigger, it would make us call a meeting within a week, or whatever you want to establish. I just think that would be a way to do it, to give you the flexibility to address the issue and to allow for input that people certainly want and need. And would make us do something quickly. You don't want to say, "Okay, we're going to vote on it next month, that's too long." But that it would give us an opportunity to quickly make an intelligent decision that we would know all the far-reaching implications for.
I like that, because I was sitting here very uneasy about a hard-and-fast limit and thinking, "What happens if we go from eighty to eighty-one, and the limit's twenty?" And if we had a policy that meant we would have to add another session when we would make that change, I think we would all anguish over that a great deal.
And I agree.
Having a limit that would require us to have discussion, to have whatever we want to outline there, I think that would be a very, very healthy thing, to force us to wrestle with the situation and to do it openly.
I agree too about, a hard-and-fast rule seems, you know, a little bit scary. But if we are at eighty-one, it seems to me like we may need to convene that team and a couple of our administrators and decide, "Okay, we're at eighty-one." Whatever, eighty-one isn't the number, but let's say we're at ninety-two. What are we going to do? You know, and I think that the people in the classroom, our administrators, you know, the building people, I think they need to sit down at that point and decide, "What are we going to do?" Because what if in October, we get three more?
Right.
You know, so we need to have that meaningful discussion, obviously, on a year-by-year and a case-by-case basis. But we need something that does trigger the discussion.
We need a target to start from.
I guess it's a target, is what we need, right?
She may talk, is that okay?
Eileen?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Eileen, and I am a current kindergarten teacher, so this is kind of my life and my passion. So, I do love it. But I agree with you guys. I think if you set a guideline, I think it would be a nice way to be able to go forward, even if you were to say nineteen or twenty. I don't think any of us would expect, just because one section has twenty-one, that you need to restart and start four sections. I think we're very logical. I think last year was so ideal, having sixteen kindergartners. I can't even fathom that that happened. In my current situation now, having twenty-two, starting with twenty-three, it truly does change what these children in kindergarten are going forward to in first grade. Another part of our life that changes is data, and it's a good thing. But I'm currently assessing seven more children than I was in the past. And that takes my instruction time away from me. And I want to be the one who's assessing them, because I want to know what their needs are so that I can meet them. And it is a piece of what we do in our curriculum and our instruction. And when I look at my data from this year, I am not sending forward the same amount of children with the skill set that I have had in the past going into first grade. And I feel at a loss as a teacher that that is happening. I am saddened that, you know, at the beginning of the school year, I started with twenty-three, and it's so embarrassing to say. But I would go home in the first month and ask myself, "Did I make eye contact with that child today?" And not have that connection. And, you know, children excel and strive in life with a connection to their teacher, no matter who they are. I think that's what gets them through. And that's what helps our education, is that they feel connected to us, and our learning process is improved by that. So, it took a long time to be able to get used to having twenty-three kids in a class. And I think it's that shock, that it's the first year of doing it, and as years go on, that maybe it will be, that pain will be dulled. But I think having nineteen, like if you said nineteen or twenty, is a reasonable thing. And if there's a section that has to have one more, that's just life, that's what happens. I don't think you have to start over. But just having that idea would be a nice idea to put in place.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that sort of reminds me, there is some data out there, and I did read this Tennessee Star report, and there were some other subsequent reports. And some of them talk about the fact that the impact is greater with low-income kids than it is with high-income kids. The great thing, there's all kinds of stuff going in and out. But I will say, it is intuitive that having eighteen, nineteen kids is, you're going to get a better result than you will with twenty-three or twenty-four with a person. I mean, there is some intuition to that. So, I guess, I would say, as we look at this, I would highly value input from our teachers in terms of determining that policy, rather than going to reports from 1985.
Yes, agreed.
1995, and caveats and those kinds of things, so.
Nate, what do we run at the middle school? Average number of students in a class? I mean, I know they switch, but?
Well, that would be, it's variable. It varies primarily based on math placement, which is one of those areas that we do group by ability level. Generally speaking, classes aren't any larger than twenty-six. Most, right now, are hovering around twenty. But again, it does vary.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Well, it sounds like what we need to do is we need to set up a guideline, a trigger, that's going to generate, if we get to this number, it's going to generate discussion among whoever we decide is going to, you know, administration, staff, parents, teachers, yeah, board. So, I think what we need to do, what I would recommend we do, is we, we had a good discussion tonight. We now go out and we get input from our teachers, meet with our parents. Just what Al suggested earlier during the public comment section, and then we can revisit this again next month.
Tent obviously, get something done so that they have guidance for the 2011, 2012.
Do we need to define a process to do that? As opposed to just saying, "Everybody tells everything you want," or an unstructured kind of a solicitation of input at this point?
We need a process.
We need a process. We need to, and I think that's what I'm hearing about transparency. There needs to be some sense of predictability about what is going to come out of it and who's going to participate in it.
Is there anyone on the board who wants to volunteer to kind of champion this one? Mary Jane, thank you. Anyone else who would like to join Mary Jane?
I'll join her until I'm off the board, I'd love to.
Then you could be our parent.
Then you could be a parent.
Corinne has volunteered also.
Okay, so if we could ask the two of you to work with Dr. Asplin, Mr. Blackmore, and Mrs. Williams to come up with the process. We will then put it out there, and we'll go forward, so that we can report on this again and have continued discussion at our April meeting.
And we can post something specific outcome on the website prior to the April meeting. I mean, I certainly think that MJ and I could meet with Katie and John, and maybe Eileen, or?
Get a handful of teachers in there, yes.
And I just wanted to add, and I just would love to welcome any of you to come to my classroom and spend the day with me, because I think that that would be a nice opportunity for you to truly see the several transitions that we go through and the lack of independence that five and six-year-olds have. So, I would love for anybody, if you want to come, just because that takes so much more teacher time.
If we come, it's going to push you up to twenty-five.
That's okay, we could even do undercover boss, where I do self-plans and I leave.
Like that, yes. Thanks, Eileen. Very cute.
Okay, so we look forward to this discussion continuing again next month. All right, other new business items, East School landscape.
Okay, so, we were talking about, or I guess I brought up the idea that, because I like plants, that if we could evaluate the current landscaping, I'll let people leave, because they're not interested in my plans, so.
I'm interested in your plan, Corinne.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, good night. That's okay, June, it's all right. Right through those doors, you got it. Okay, so, the, as Jane mentioned earlier, the project is going to start April 1st. So, what I am proposing for discussion is that I would like to see us consider looking and making an evaluation of the existing perennial plant material that has, is currently in place on the property. And then, if we can save any of those plants, shrubs, trees, that are considering, are going to be demolished with the project, then we could determine if they're, if we can transplant them and find a suitable location to house them for either additional landscaping at Lake Bluffell Middle School, or being able to put it somewhere where we can use it once the property is available for planting, so.
And a lot of these plants were put there by?
The garden club, yes. At their expense, so they are very much wanting to at least see us consider anything we may be doing to, if it makes sense, to save them, so.
I'd only add the caveat that we'd be focusing on the high-quality specimens, so.
Yes, yeah. The larger shrubs, any trees. And again, I think it's just a matter of us going and seeing which ones are going to be considered threatened by the demolition versus those that we already are planning on keeping.
Okay, here's what we'll do. I'll get the plan for which trees. I think probably most shrubs that are next to the building are, have got to go. I'll get the plan for which trees are marked for removal due to the demolition of the building. I'll share that with you. We'll get somebody, a landscaper, out there to then give us a proposal for what plantings you want to save, and we'll come up with the plan of where they'll go. I'll work with Mr. Blackmore and Mrs. Williams to see what they would entertain having planted around either of the schools, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Oh, and one other piece of new business. There is a great program going on right now in the downtown area. It's called Passport to Education. It's been publicized, thanks to Kathleen Reedy, all over the place. She did a fabulous job making signs, putting a full-page ad, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, was placed in the Lake Forrester. She's got things on our website. So, I encourage you all to, all you TV people out there, walk through town for the next two weeks. There's great science projects, art projects, really terrific things, all the way from the elementary school, middle school, all the way through the high school. And it's really cool to see the progression, and twenty-one merchants are involved, so they'd love to see people visit them. So, there's raffle prizes too, so enjoy, thank you.
I have one piece of new business, briefly. Just to, I'll continue to, I think I mentioned just a few of them. I'll continue to do a little research. I did determine today that some of the guest authors who have come in and signed the wall at East School, Mark Brown being probably the most notable, were, that is plaster, it's extremely thick. And I am doing some research over the next couple of days to try to see if there's any way that we can cut these things out of there and not have them go with the demolition. I'm not totally optimistic. But one of the challenges will be, if we can get some help with that, is we're going to get power, and I think we can run, we'd have to run power over from middle school. So, Jane, should I coordinate that with you if I find something that we think we can do? And we'll try. I can't guarantee, plaster is extremely brittle. It's not drywall, if it was drywall, it would have been really easy, but it's not.
But we've taken really good pictures.
I took some really good pictures of them today, I felt, so we're going to try, because there's some pretty neat drawings that people have done on that wall.
Other new business, first reading of the new board policies, the press update. We all have that. If everyone could review that, we will vote on that next month at our April meeting. Okay, any other new business from any board members? Okay, old business, East School frontis piece.
I emailed to each of you a diagram. First of all, the village has requested that the school district follow their residential zoning on a sixty-foot setback for a structure. So, the board is wanting to save the archway, the frontis piece of East School, and rebuild it. We would hope along the perimeter of the open lot, but with the sixty-foot setback, that won't allow, basically the sixty-foot, just for those of you who need a visual, it's about five feet in front of where it is right now in front of the building.
That's the closest it can be to the street.
Yes, to share it in place. Share it in place. So, BLDD created the diagram that I emailed to each of you today for review that shows four possible locations that would lend itself to leave the empty space at 121, he shared in place, flexible for any future use of that space, rather than putting it, plunking it down in the middle of the lot, because we want it to be nice, open, green space right now. So, I've given that document to you for review, discussion. We're going to have to make some kind of determination, because it was included in the bid to save this piece and reconstruct it somewhere on the site.
And I'd just like to speak up, and Eric Wagner, Eric Renier, we all were on the East School Task Force, and we worked with community members who were very passionate about preserving this piece, and also had interest in serving on a future task force for the green space. So, I would love to be able to propose the idea of taking the work that BLDD did as part of this project, and putting that information into our discussion once the demolition is complete, so that we make sure we do the best that we can for that space. And our biggest hurdle will be to find a safe way to store the frontis piece, because it is made of limestone, which is very fragile. And so, we are quite aware of the difficulties in moving it, storing it, so we're taking as much care of it as we can. So, I just want those people who are out there, again, watching, I know you're watching, watching, to know that we are moving forward, but with the understanding that there will be an opportunity for people who are interested to be involved with planning of that new green area as well.
Yeah, the advantage of it now, if we move it and rebuild it now, is that it can all be rolled into what we're doing, we don't have to store it, we don't have to do anything special with it, which is really an enticing thing. We thought, well, we can put it up front, we know where we want to put it. The village said, we explained the zoning situation. So, I thought BLDD's ideas were really good. And I think there's a very reasonable chance that one of those will be selected. However, I still feel, given the fact that the expense is going to, in the scheme of things, isn't going to be too great to put it into storage, that I think we need some more time to make a final determination, because we are going to have to deal with, you know, permitting this thing regardless of where we are. I see some potential pitfalls there. I think we would like the community involved, as Corinne said. But ultimately, we also have to put it in a place that we know that maybe someday, thirty years from now, we're rebuilding the middle school over in the other direction, and we don't have to have that thing moved again, which could destroy it for good. So, my view is, we want to make sure it's in the right place, community's involved in it, but that we put it in a place where it's not going to be interfered with in the future, hopefully. So, my view was going to be to say, I think we should go forward with the plan to take it down and put it in storage and do more work on it. And I'd be happy to participate on that committee as a community member when I'm off the board next month.
And I concur with that approach.
Agree.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so it seems like Al?
That's three of us, anyway.
I'll wait for Kim here.
Consensus with what Eric just recommended? Eric?
Yeah.
MJ?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with it, too.
Me too.
Okay, so there's.
Okay, then that's fine, and we'll work on figuring out how, you know, to store it and protect it. But who's going to take the lead on the task force, and who, when, how? I just want to know that, so we can?
Eric can be your board representative.
However, we're going to preserve it, we do it correctly, okay.
Corinne and I will stay involved and minimize the things you have to do.
Absolutely, I think that's a good plan.
Okay.
Great, thank you to three of you. Okay, other old business?
I have something that I'd like to talk about that dovetails a little bit on this, because as I look at the diagram of the possible placements for this, I see that placement three and four are pretty close to the middle school. And tonight, we did not accept the alternate bid for changing anything in terms of music in the basement of middle school. But we are in phase two of the renovations to middle school, and while it's not on the docket for this year, I think we need to talk about, if at some point, we're going to consider putting that music room, where we had originally talked about as a part of phase two. And if so, it seems to me like we'd be moving this frontis piece, or it'd come into play, if that's something that we think that.
Yep.
So, I guess what I'd like to say is, Jane, I know we had some original dollars for that music room, which may not be completely current. And while we're not going to be doing the music room this year, if we wanted to make some plans for the next few years, looking at what that might cost, what would we need to do? at what that might cost, what would we need to do?
Well, if that's a goal that the board has to do, and if it's something that you think, first of all, we're talking about, just off the cuff, we're under a million dollars most likely, depending on the square footage, but the music, a music room isn't going to be quite as, I don't want to use the word extravagant, but it, that's what comes to mind, as the band room, it's different, different needs. If that's a goal of the board and you're wanting to pay for it out of operating funds, first of all, we've got to get through this construction project, which is pretty good, pretty much going to eat up every dollar of our $900,000 from West School, but that just entails some long range planning with the operation and maintenance fund to see how we get there.
Great, thank you, so, I mean.
But that has to be in the back of our mind too, as we're considering a location.
Right, I don't want to place the thing that we don't want to move.
Exactly.
Sometime in five years or so.
That's a good point, right. Considering all those factors, yeah.
Got me thinking now.
Don't. And we certainly should continue to have those discussions about what was on phase two in terms of.
Well, we've been living in the band room for a couple of years now, you know, we could approach both Mr. Beasy and Ms. C and Nate about, how are we dealing with that, is there anything we left out, you know, should we revisit it just to see what are the things that we would be thinking about a couple of years down the road, and how should we start planning?
This will dovetail on all of, all of the long range financial planning and goal setting that we have, because we don't ever want to make a decision in a vacuum, so we want to look at all operating funds, which is education, O and M, transportation certainly, and we have to look at IMRF fund as well now because that fund is operating in a deficit, although we have a very healthy balance in there, but because of tax caps, et cetera. So what we'll want to do is continue to update our long range projections, and if we have a goal, to work towards specific goals in all, in all funds.
Given the fact that we anticipate financial pressure on our fund balance will, will continue for at least a few years, so we just need to maybe let that play out before we start.
Yeah, we don't ever want to get to the point where we have to make some dire decisions, that's why we are being proactive and looking ahead and making some less, you know, painful decisions now to ward off having to make painful decisions later, so we always want to keep that at the forefront.
I'm glad you brought it up, those people in the community who would like to see that happen one day, and so it's certainly a target that we could put out.
Something that we haven't forgotten about, so.
Okay, any other old business from board members? Okay, next agenda item is closed session. I move that the Board of Education enters into closed session to discuss personnel.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
You're now moving into closed session.